Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Bel Air Beach April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three City Council Work Session. It is now six P. M. Please rise and join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, into the Republic of Philadelphia, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Belinda Livingstone.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Sable.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reeffler.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
Thank you, Patty. All right, we'll just move right on into item one. Well, I tell you what, before we do, we're going to try to take a hard break at seven thirty, and in this meeting, we'll go no longer than nine P. M. All right, item one, discussion of draft ordinance for city code sections thirty-eight through eighty, or thirty-eight, eighty-seven, picnic or public gathering permit. This was placed on the agenda by City Attorney Mora, and I believe he emailed us some supplemental content.
Thank you, council members. My apologies for the end transmission as I was traveling much last week. You have before you a draft proposed ordinance. We are not on first reading. We are not on second reading. We are workshopping and see that for your benefit, but also for the the public who may be observing this process. This issue came up somewhat unexpectedly. This is not in response to any specific event in your community or gathering that I'm aware of. In fact, historically, the city's records don't reveal any instances where anybody was cited in violation of section thirty-eight, eighty-seven, or had issues with permitting from the city or unreasonable or unfounded denials. In last month, the city received correspondence from an organization that advocates on issues of constitutional law, and they presented or made the city aware of some constitutional defects with the ordinance in its current form. This draft seeks to address some of those. I will say both for the benefit of the record and for that of you council members in the event you haven't seen the latest and greatest. We did receive correspondence from them shortly before this meeting was called to order, communicating additional concerns and defects, perceived defects with the current draft. Before drafting this, I did send correspondence to them last week asking for any suggestions, sample ordinances they find suitable based on the concerns they'd raised. Until this evening, I had not received that, so it's an ongoing dialogue. There's no real urgency to adopting an amendment yet because, again, we're not responding to a pressing exigency in our community, and better to get it right than to get it done fast. That said, the ordinance before you is modeled after elements I've seen in several other ordinances that clearly sought to address these constitutional concerns that were raised about vagueness in the in the existing ordinance on what is a political event, what is a religious event, are they afforded sufficient protection, et cetera. I'm happy to go to speak to any element of this. I did, as I try to do, highlight the things that are most that are true, that are not legal, but are just placeholders, if you will. Hey, I put twenty-one days notice for a permit. If you want to make that ten or fourteen, you can do that. That didn't come from the Supreme Court or anything. Similarly, I set the presumption of a gathering at thirty. Presently, it's at nine. The reason I increased that number, and again, that remains subject to your discretion. One of the reasons I increased that number is arguably a ten-person basketball game could go, you know, five-on-five gets you above nine. I was trying to get to something that wasn't as of much concern to the community. Again, dating back to some of the records we do have, some of the language that we have in our ordinance presently was last put in in two thousand and eighteen in in response to people showing up to city parks and hosting events like weddings, extemporaneously putting out the chairs, the tents, et cetera, and never really checking with anybody, and of course, using that space to the exclusion of others without getting any permits, insurance, all those other things. In the materials I sent you, I sent you the draft proposed ordinance. I sent you the correspondence history between the parties, and that that organization's name is FIRE. They are based out of Philadelphia. And again, we have an open dialogue with FIRE and their concerns. The other thing I did include, just for point of reference, was Florida statute three sixteen dot two zero four five. That that was, that's on obstructing public streets, highways, and roads. This was adopted by the legislature during the two thousand and twenty-one legislative session. It was candidly done in response to the social unrest of two thousand and twenty and some of the the street obstructions and highway obstructions that had occurred. The ordinance is actually part of a broader constitutional challenge that's directed to that statute, so that maybe we're awaiting judicial rulings on that. It's a footnote in that case. It's more towards the educational limits and all the other things, but it was part of a broader Stop Block Act adoption that that has faced its own constitutional challenges, and the courts are still dealing with that. But I did raise that in as much as you may have concerns about, well, what are we doing about keeping our streets clear, et cetera? There is a statute on point, and I don't really think we need to tread into that any further than the statute already provides, in my advice to you, to the extent the statute is itself enforceable. And so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The correspondence you received from FIRE identified various that we received this evening from FIRE identified various concerns, urging you not to adopt this and to give them time up until April twenty-eighth to provide their own sample language. Again, because we're not in a position of exigency here, personally, I see no issue with saying, great, get us your comments sooner the better so that we can make them part of any main materials, depending on whether this body desires to workshop this further or have it on first reading, subject to whatever feedback you give me tonight or they give me at that point if we find it useful. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, comments, concerns about the substance and form of this ordinance. Yes, ma'am.
Did you say that the three, section three sixteen is under review now?
It is there. So there's a series of constitutional challenges that were directed to the stat, the statutory adoption. I forget the House bill and Senate bill number, but that enactment in two thousand and twenty-one, they, there's like a footnote in there of, in addition to all our other concerns, hey, this is a little over broad or vague or, you know, as as written, but we don't, there's been no ruling on that. It's not the primary argument in the litigation, but there is a legal argument directed to it.
To some court at some point.
Yeah, it is. It is. There may be some judicial resolution of that.
Mr. Mora, since you sent them a draft copy of what we considered good enough, are they, do they understand the variables? Are they highlighting the copy that they received so that they they know that we may want to change the numbers and we don't?
Um, they know they they, I didn't specifically tell them the highlighted text is variables. They seem pretty well-versed in legislative adoptions, and that, to the extent they raised concerns this evening, one of them was not nine, none of them was directed to the number, like, hey, thirty's no good or hundred's no good. They suggested there may be some inconsistencies in those numbers, which I would look at and review. I don't know if that's borne out. But regardless, they are they are aware this is in working form. I sent it to them. You you receive this transmission Saturday afternoon, and within twenty minutes, I forwarded it to them as well to keep that, because they are the primary shareholder advocating on this position. I wish to keep that communication line open.
One more question. What do you think that the, what's the overlying motivation of wanting to do this for us? Because at first, it appeared that they wanted to do this to us, and now it's more they want to help us. So what what's the, what?
Yeah.
Endgame of this?
I can't speak to to motivations and perceptions. What I can say is, I think that when you are in public activism, and this is a form of public activism, and while that term has become loaded in the last four years, that is at its core what this is supposed to be. This activism, you're accustomed to dealing in a confrontational approach, right? You are speaking truth to power or telling power, hey, you may have done this wrong. And ordinarily, power doesn't respond well, if you will, unto that. And so the the paradigm is usually one of confrontation. Our response to them was not pound sand. It's our ordinances. Do what we'll do what we want, get lost. While they, while they started from a place of confrontation, I think, our response saying, hey, thanks for bringing this to our attention. We'll see if we can do better. If we can, great, if it meets with your satisfaction, wonderful. If not, well, we'll see where our disagreements are and how principled we are about those. But I think that our approach in responding to them and saying, we'll take a look at this. We intend to redraft this. And if you have input, let us know. Well, then that's just the legislative process. So now there are where they want to be, a part of the dialogue on what gets codified. I I don't think that's all that unusual in that respect. As far as why in the great wide world of the United States did this organization find our ordinance? And why, why now? Why the very immediate attention to it once it was presented? I don't know. I'm not, I'm not in their boardrooms. I'm not in their listservs or anything to speak to what their priorities are. I can tell you in the last year or so, and they they're very clear about this. The organization pivoted from one that used to be focused on campuses to one that's focused, and this is a pretty low-lying fruit as far as the ordinance reads in its current form to say, hey, I think there's some problems here. My draft was, again, modeled after various ordinances that, and where I saw the, you know, you talk mean median mode, the mode where what are the most frequent kinds of language we find and trying to incorporate those? As was noted in a hearing last week on another legislative adoption in another community, where an attorney came to the microphone, he said, you know, it's very, very easy. It's very, very difficult to draft an ordinance. It's very easy to challenge ones. I look at this one, I could find dozens of things to challenge, whether or not those are, you know, where we're focused is something else. And so that's all I can speak to that.
Okay, counsel.
Mike. Yeah, um, yeah, because that's really my first question, you know, why targeted us? But I think I really think we've been targeted by somebody or somebody else, because we're an exceptionally small city. And for them to go after a small city with no financial recourse is seems like a hit job. Second of all, I think you got my statement about over thirty. We regularly go over thirty where we're doing sandbags outside. That's not a scheduled event. That just.
Yeah, you you did send me correspondence and response to the the circulation stating we should make an additional exception for sandbag distribution. In its current form, the ordinance provides that no permit or anything is necessary for city-sponsored events. That would be a city-sponsored event. There's also an exception for assemblies where people are lawfully directed to assemble, and we are directing them, come here and get your sandbags. So I think in its current form, that would be sufficient. But, you know, again, depending on how this, if at all this gets revised and how it gets revised, I would keep my eye on that issue. Thank you.
Okay, final point is, I'd like you to contact the Florida League of Cities and find out, has anybody else got that letter? That'll tell me a lot, that they are just, we're trying to help you, but Bel Air Beach, somebody turned you in, somebody's gunning for you. We're the only person or city in Florida that is being basically attacked. So can we find out if anybody, I mean, if.
I'm happy to inquire. The League of Cities may not necessarily be subject to the public records laws in the same ways, or, but they could tell us if their members are getting similar inquiries.
Actually, my recommendation, just to avoid wasting our precious attorney money.
Yeah.
You have contacts. Just reach out to anyone there and ask the question. All, at the end of the day, our ordinance was bad, and and it just had never been called out. And anyone else?
Well, I know the organization. I don't know Aaron. I did speak to Aaron on the phone today. I think this resonated from when we tried to force a permit on the Jehovah Witnesses. It read something, something spurred up the chain of command. But I have an easy solution here, and I think he's, he was a hundred percent in agreement with it, because me and him were going over the ordinance that you submitted. I said, man, there are so many challenges here. It's crazy. Just eliminate it. Eliminate that little thirty-eight, whatever it is, done and over with. I mean, what does it serve us to have thirty-eight dash eighty-seven picnic or public gathering permit? Have we ever issued a permit? Have we ever, when asked for a permit, we don't need it. To put nine pages in the Munich Munich Code, how much is that going to cost?
I believe we do issue permits.
We do for pavilion at Morgan Park.
For Morgan Park?
Yeah.
How about here?
Birthday party, retirement party.
Any of the parks.
Any parks. Yeah.
It's it's the way that you prevent chaos whenever two groups don't play able to have a reservation.
Right, but that's that's running the hall, right?
Oh, not the hall, the the pavilion.
Right, we're the pavilion, we're we're exchanging funds, is what I'm saying, correct? Or?
Yes, if it's a, if it's a non-resident, there's a fee. If it's a resident, then the requirement of insurance.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this doesn't address any of that, like the requirements of fees or anything like that. So eliminate thirty-eight, eighty-seven, and this whole thing goes away.
If that's the will of the of the of the council, I'm happy to do so. Again, my direction was give me another draft. And, you know, while I appreciate the concern about the length of the ordinance, as I looked at samples, I could, there was a handful of samples that were a page or two that were were much more succinct, but then they had more robust other sections that dealt with elements of this. Most community, many communities, I would say, have some form of special event permitting process in place. When you think of going to a county and wanting to reserve the pavilion at, you know, John Chestnut Park in in North County, if you want to reserve Pavilion Five, you don't want to show up and find out there's a five K that's decided to use it that day. That's usually what what this regime is for. And again, you folks are better versed in how your resources are used and what's necessary. I defer to you. I'm not taking some hard line stance on this. I, we can add to, subtract from, whatever you, whatever you wish. That's why it's a work session. I welcome your input. Thank you, Mr. Banker, for that point.
Yeah, but I'm saying, but that's not what this ordinance thirty-eight sixty-seven says or eighty-seven says, okay? Yes, okay, you can have a picnic. This is for, I want to have a gathering out front. I need a permit. That's that's illegal, okay? It's. Are you against your first amendment? All right.
I disagree with time placement and restrictions are unlawful.
Well, I'll tell you one thing. For a guy that's done this over a hundred times on picket lines, I don't think it is illegal. If I want to put a picket line out front, I could put a picket line out front.
Understood.
Certain, certain things. You can lock me up. I I don't think I'm going to.
I don't lock anybody.
No, I'm just saying, you have the sheriff lock me up. I'm sure I'm going to get out. But what I'm saying is, this is unnecessary length, and it's just costing us time and money.
Understood.
It wasn't, I think it was brought up at the last meeting. It was adapted in something like two thousand and eighteen.
The language is, a form of the language has been in there since nineteen eighty-one, subsection B that addressed the the subsection B in the current form that added the no permit shall be granted for the conduct of any commercial, political, or organized event. That language appeared in two thousand and eighteen, but the sub A has been, a version of sub A has been in your code for more than thirty years, almost forty, I believe.
Actually, section B is a catch twenty-two.
Section B is the most problematic part of it.
Yeah.
Unquestioned.
We're not going to grant a permit. So if you're not going to grant a permit, you're going to have to.
Well, and I want to be very clear for the record. I didn't write it. My firm didn't work here at the time. I can't speak to that. I just, I'm, my, my task was give me an alternative.
But as. We gather some information maybe to address your concerns, like how many permits have we issued or had requests for? And just so we can look at it and see if it's even an issue.
Just off the top of my head, it's usually one, two max a year, and it's only Morgan Park that we've done permits for.
And and is that for like a wedding?
It's been for a wedding or a photographs or just a resident gathering that they wanted to ensure that the thing was available.
How many have been denied?
None.
Nine, okay. What what I'm reading in the whereas, the second whereas statement is the city has legitimate ability and duty to regulate the safe and responsible administration of its limited recreational resources and facilities for the protection of public health, safety, and welfare of its residents and visitors. I I don't see why there's such an urgency to eliminate it. It may not be something that we use often, but what if it becomes that way? And what if suddenly it is uncontrollable because we no longer have an ordinance to to control, to to keep order in chaos? That's that's my two cents on it. Any other council members like to comment? Yes, it's Livingstone.
I don't think that it matters why they brought this to our attention. I think that it matters that we resolve it because it is unconstitutional. And I agree with Mr. Mora that we wait, see what his thought process is, and we construct it based on on that and and let Attorney Mora do his due diligence in in doing some further research on our behalf.
I agree with you one hundred percent. I also think that that really having both legal teams, Mr. Mora being his own team, working through this together is saving both organizations plenty of money. And the quicker that that we can satisfy their requirements, the quicker we can put this to bed. And I think that both organizations, us and them, will be happy with the outcome, and this will quietly go away.
So perhaps ask the other legal team for their input on, or maybe suggestions, redlined on what Attorney Moore has done. So then at that point, they can coordinate and go, okay, let's just go through this and see where we meet.
I believe that's what Mr. Mora stated they were doing.
They did provide that this evening.
Okay.
That email, I'm sorry, I was trying to switch to my, look, that email came through at about five seventeen P. M. On my server. So I I reviewed it while I was, you know, sitting in the car right before I walked in. They identified at least six different issues, at least, and they say it's not an exhaustive list of the constitutional issues with those ordinances language. FIRE, and again, that's their acronym, urges the city not to enact the proposed amended ordinance in its current form. They'd be pleased to submit no later than April twenty eighth for mine and the council's consideration, a proposed ordinance that seeks to address the city's concerns while protecting the exercise of First Amendment rights in the city's parks and other public areas. So that's, that is their present position. They are, they are willing to participate in a collaborative dialogue, and I don't wish to represent anything to the contrary.
All right, so my my recommendation on this would be to, let's go ahead and go through the the few variables. And let's just see if we can agree on that. And and then if if that passes the test, then Mr. Mora can pass that information on along to FIRE, and and let's see what they come back with. Does everyone agree with that? Good about that? All right, so let's head over to page number two of the draft, the one hundred or more people. Mr. Mora, would you like to explain that?
As it's written, and again, this language, I I found this language in another, the actual, and I understand how there's some concern or concerning confusion here. It says that any, it is presumed, so it establishes a rebuttable presumption, but it's presumed any evident, any event on private property which involves an open invitation of the public to attend or events where the attendance is by private invitation of a hundred or more people are presumed to be an event with a significant impact on public resources, basically, are presumed to be events that need a permit. So if you're sending out invitations and you're inviting a hundred and fifty people, we're not going to waste to see if twenty people showed up or forty people showed up. It's presumed by your invite list that you are going to be having an event that requires permitting. That's that language, and I wish to cross-reference that with the language on page four at the top that says that groups of thirty fewer people in a city park are not considered are not considered, basically, the threshold is thirty-one people for getting a permit. If you plan to have thirty-one people, you need to get a permit unless, so if you're less than thirty, or thirty or less, I should say, sorry, if you're thirty or less, you don't need a permit unless you're doing things for sale or trade, you're setting up a booth, you're selling things. The gathering has a significant impact on the ordinary use at city park, and the gathering requires or makes use of the construction, erection, or maintenance of any building, structure, equipment, or scaffolding. At that point, okay, you're not just, hey, we're all getting together for a picnic. We're putting up booths and tables and a stand and the likes. That's what that the comparison between that hundred and thirty language is, because I did get a question about that.
So that's that consistency issue on page two of their letter, coming back to right at the top third about internal consistencies.
That's one of the, that's, I think, I I think it can be harmonized, but I do understand that is one of the concerns they've raised about internal inconsistencies.
And it's probably just because they didn't understand the.
It's possible. I mean, I'm not suggesting that this is immaculate drafting. This is a working draft in discussion and definitely could benefit from a more careful review on my part and any input you folks have. I'm not suggesting that this is infallible. I'm willing to look at their comments. I haven't had time to digest them in review of the draft.
Well, I don't think anyone's had time to address it, but it's kind of tough to read this and compare it to the draft on the fly. So I don't, I don't even know if it's worth spending our time on it at this work session.
Well, there were, I think that was really the conflict and and really, I would say that we just need to agree or disagree that the one hundred or more people for a for a party. Is that, is that what we're looking for?
What what I would say, Mayor, is, and and Mr. Shirley, your points are well taken, that I I'm not asking you to harmonize their comments in this draft. My ask at this point is whether your stance is to go in a direction similar to Mr. Bankard's, we don't need any of this, or we don't need some of this, or we would like to see more. If any of you having and and again, my apologies for the Saturday transmission, but in the time that you have had to review just this draft, was there anything that stood out to you that was like, get rid of it, or this isn't doing enough so that I know going forward, in addition to whatever comments they give me, that I'm carrying your waters, my client, to say, it's really important to me that we do X, Y, or Z? If there's anything like that in this ordinance or that needs to be in this ordinance, please let me know so that when we come back, we're in a better position. That would be my ask at this time, and and I hear Member Bankard's very clear feelings on on the fact that none of this is necessary. And again, if that's the stance of the council, I'm happy to go in that direction.
I I think if you counsel would vote to say, we're going to do away with this ordinance, okay? It would quench fire.
Well, of course, because then the ordinance doesn't exist.
Okay, but then we can come back and address the last paragraph of A, which is really what we need. The city manager may require any person or group seeking to use public property at the city to provide the city manager with a certificate of liability and insurance. Okay, that's really what we're concerned about, that we don't get sued if somebody gets hurt, all right? And readapt this word. Someone contacted FIRE up in Philadelphia. It's, Aaron used to be with the A F A C L U. I mean, they got a lot of left-wing.
Politics aside, I, yeah.
And I I dealt with them up there. I mean, they can be a real pain in the, what I'm sitting on, but I I think you you put this to bed right away. You say, hey, we're not going to go for, we're, we're killing it. He he suggested to me today, why don't you just table it and let us work on it? I said, why don't we just kill it? Well, that would do it. You know?
It definitely would do it, but I am a firm believer that ordinances are put in place for a reason.
And.
And there there must have been a reason why this was was put in our city code.
No argument there, Mr. Mayor. And like I said, he said that, you know, once or twice a year, the vice mayor said once or twice a year, I don't want the city getting sued because somebody, well, you were here when the guy fell walk into his car supposedly, you know? So I don't, I don't want to see that happen. But I mean, the last sentence is a good sentence, but we can readapt that later.
I have, go ahead.
I, for the sake of clarity, to the extent FIRE's representation, or whether it was Mr. Tur specifically, or FIRE's representation was, you know, why don't we table this while we work through it? That's precisely where we're at. There is no, I just, I needed in clarity in the record, there is no effort to presently enforce this, and no one is being, you know, held to account for this. So that's where we are. We are trying to work, work through this draft in whatever form this council needs.
And they're fully aware of that, and they they realize they've gotten our attention, and they're trying to to solve a problem.
Well, it's on their website, and if we kill the ordinance, it'll be on their website that FIRE made this big.
Well, I disagree, though. What we should be doing is, if you're going to do that, just take all this, the entire city code, and throw it out the door.
No, I didn't say that at all.
You just insisted on throwing out something that had a reason, a reason behind it.
All right, gentlemen, one at a time, please.
Oh, anyway, what we do have to do, at least recommendation, it's like, it's all a great start, just again, table it, just let them work with it. But we don't really have a feel for the numbers, because there may be reasoning behind them, like they, FIRE pointed out early, excuse me, I have a fourth, to let the attorneys figure out, and then they can come back and go, okay, here's the reason behind the one hundred, or here's the reason that we said no to a hundred. Negotiation between the two, and so that we craft a better thing, because we do have a responsibility. We have a limited resource, and that limited resource is not, it maybe, it should not be a free-for-all, trying to, who's going to be parked in that space first to grab the venue? There should be a way to reserve ahead of time, so you know, on the fifteenth, I can get my daughter married and not show up and have a ten-year-old birthday party there.
Thank you, Mr. Sable. I I think your points made. Now, Mr. Banker, you're you're welcome to rebuttal.
Well, my rebuttal is, again, put this thing to bed, okay? As Mr. Sable said. As Mr. Zabel said, we have a limited resource of funds, okay? Rather than not try and take money out of your pocket, Mr. Moore, but.
This is all retainer work. No, no money's taken.
Whatever, whatever, you have, you have better things to do than this, in my opinion. And bring this up on another day. Let it die and resurrect it in another fashion.
Other comments from the council?
No, I meant, just read quickly, I meant not a limited resource of money, but a limited resource of parks that are available.
I, I understand. Any other comments?
Comments on this particular issue that's going back and forth?
This particular issue, what I'm about to do is I'm going to ask for a consensus on, do we, start, do we move in the direction that Mr. Bankard would like for us to move into? Or would the council prefer to continue going down the road? We're going right now with, with Mr. Maury and FIRE working together. So let's just start with Vice Mayor Shirley.
If we are just discussing permitted permits for our parks, which we have one park that is really, I guess this, well, we have two parts that could be an issue. I think it's important that we keep an ordinance on the books that it requires a permit for special gatherings. I don't know that it needs to be this complicated, so I'm, I'm indifferent. I'm kind of, I don't know. I, I, I don't have a answer to that, Dave, quite honestly.
On the fence.
On the fence.
It's living stone.
I'm in agreement with allowing Attorney Maury to move forward. I believe that a process does need to be in place, no matter how simple or complicated, something needs to be put in place and let's wait and see what FIRE has to say.
Councilmember Roberts?
Yes, I think we should keep the ordinance and I'm, I'm confident that once we go through this process, with our legal counsel and FIRE's legal counsel, that this thing probably will get minimized somewhat to where it's more clear and more directed to the things that we need. But I do need, I do feel comfortable that we need an ordinance in place.
Mr. Banker?
Well, right now, it's been stated that this ordinance is in advance, so we don't have an ordinance to enforce right now, so.
It's still a lawfully, it's still an ordinance that we can enforce, we're just not enforcing.
Am I not correct that we're not enforcing it though?
Correct. We're not enforcing it. I'm just saying that doesn't take it off our.
Right, but it's in the base.
Sir, yes, sir.
Okay, so what I'm saying is you cater to these organizations, someone else is going to come after you because you show weakness. So, hey, yeah, this is an unconstitutional thing, we're removing it. Three months down the road, you reiterate it.
Ms. Notaro?
I suggest that Attorney Maury go ahead with the people from the FIRE to work out a solution. I don't think we should abandon the ordinance at this point.
Councilmember Zabel?
I agree with Councilman Bankard's last comment, but I recommend that we go forward with Attorney Moore and allow them to work together, coordinate this.
I am sort of on the fence too, much like Councilmember or Vice Mayor Shirley is. However, in response to Councilman, Councilmember Bankard's comments about, it will show us, letting them push us around, we have to respond one way or the other, so that argument's already over. Right now, I think that, that the best decision for this city is to let them continue. And if we don't like the outcome, then we change our direction and we kill it. Is that fair enough? Everyone on the same page? All right. Mr. Maury, you have your instructions.
Understood. Thank you very much.
I do have a, a quick question. I know the numbers are fluid. But when I was reading permit application process where we highlighted twenty-one days, and then on the grounds for denial, it talked about absent and approved waiver, the permit application is submitted less than sixty days prior to the event.
Thank you.
So those numbers would have to be the same number?
Changed that sixty to twenty-one and failed to change that other.
Okay, whatever the number is, it seems to be the same number.
Yes, sir.
Perfect, perfect, perfect.
The other thing about city staff not having it up, you only have two people.
I understand. I, I was working in consistently with what your two people are presently doing.
Just saying, so if someone's having a poker game, they're not going to have enough staff members.
All right, moving right along to item number two, which is discussion on strategic plan scorecard. This was placed on the agenda by City Manager Reefer. Reefer, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Everyone, I believe, has a larger version? Okay, great. Okay, that one's a little easier to read. So this, this goal came off of Appendix B of the city manager's contract. And just as a rehash, it says, develop and integrate a city of Bel Air Beach dashboard or scorecard to, the purpose of the document would be to succinctly, succinctly, synthesize the metrics necessary to efficiently assess the progress or status of the city's strategic plans, goals, and their relationship to the city's budget, CIP, and code enforcement efforts. So given that description of the goal, this is my interpretation, my first draft, of trying to summarize that information and as it, how it relates to our strategic plan, our projects, the, the dollars that we're spending, and our code enforcement efforts. So if you go to the top, I started with the, the twenty-twenty-three budget year projects and listed those. The next column over shows an estimated completion. Some of them are completed so that we're not just keeping the current projects, we're, we're keeping track of the ones that have gotten completed. So then I, I kind of broke it down by the year and quarter that we expect the completion. Just, you know, that may be something that changes depending on how the project moves along, it'll be updated. And then what I did is to sort of, I guess quantify how these projects are hitting the five areas or five goals of the strategic plan. I, I use ones and zeros. So one obviously is if it, if I felt that that project hit that specific goal versus a zero, if it just did not address it at all. So then you can see as I mark through the projects, some ones and zeros and with a total goals hit, that gives it sort of a weight of what it's hitting as far as the strategic plan is concerned. I also included the city's costs of the projects. Some of them were done by staff or, or a combination of staff and volunteers. So that didn't cost the city anything. I just wanted to make note of it so that we could track the, the amount of the dollars going into these projects and, and going into these goals essentially. So dropping that all down, so you have all your projects and then you have your totals of each, each goal and what the projects to date, how many points we've, we've scored in each goal. I've, I took those numbers and also broke down the amount of dollars we, we put into each goal. Now, if you look at a goal like Gulf Boulevard Underground and it hits three of the goal, or sorry, a project is like Gulf Boulevard Underground, it hits three of the goals, which was the public safety and health, the tax dollar value and the aesthetics. So then when you, you bring it over, it says city's cost eight hundred and six thousand. That is, that is the amount of shortfall after our penny funding. So that's why that is not the, you know, millions that was put into that project. So from that current cost of coming out of our budget, I took that amount. And then because it hit three of the goals, I, the way I broke it down is I divided those, those, that amounts evenly across each goal. So when you go down to the bottom of each goal and you see the green where it shows the dollar amount spent, that was broken evenly among, depending on how many goals it hit and the dollars that were spent on that project, that makes sense. And then you'll see something like the communication community, which I need to adjust some of these titles that got cut off. You'll see that, you know, the totals of a hundred dollars, that, that I, it was probably under a hundred, I just rounded it up. But I was trying to express that there was some minimal cost for when we did the walking easement surveys, but it wasn't much. So that's noted. So then from these rankings of the, the points hit per goal, you know, I, I wanted some visuals, so I did the pie graph, kind of just shows per goal, these projects, you know, what we covered. I also did some bar graphs for the, for the dollars spent so that, you know, you can see the totals and you can see just in comparison to each other. And then lastly, to hit that code enforcement aspect that was in the description of the goal, I did the code enforcement logs and what I did is I accumulated from beginning in January twenty twenty-three, because that's when I really kind of fully launched this, this new idea of tracking, you know, our code reports. I, I summarized those. So the idea is, this would be something that a, a resident could find on our website. They'd be able to see our current projects, they'd be able to see our strategic plan and be on this website as well and understand what projects we're doing and how those projects are hitting our strategic plan and what goals.
Cool. Nice job. Councilmember Zabel?
Yeah, I'm probably going to pile on with everybody here saying, this is great. I only have one small thing and this is really kind of a thought. If you go over to the far column, something called goals hit, we really can't say that we have hit those goals because some of these are obviously in the out years. Can we say perhaps areas covered?
Sure.
That's all. But everything, yeah, I mean, we'll pile on tonight. It looks great. This is what, at least I feel what we wanted when we wrote that contract.
I find this interesting too, that our biggest code enforcement problem, I guess you'd say, is construction-related nuisances. So I know that there's, there's been a lot of back and forth about the value of outsourcing code enforcement. But I would say that the deputy has done a great job of catching these problems. And even though many times we, we think it's unreasonable, this right here, this shows that, yeah, there's definitely a problem in Bel Air Beach with unpermitted in and out of code construction and additions, et cetera. So, and will we be getting this monthly now?
So, yeah, I wanted, I wanted to gather your ideas, possible changes, ways to present it differently. But then what I wanted to do with your consent is to, yes, create a page. And I tried to design it in a way that it wasn't overly burdensome to, to keep up with. So, yeah, my, my intention is to, you know, keep it updated on a monthly basis along, you know, when we prepare the reports for this council meetings.
Other comments from the council? Yes, Mr. Roberts?
The definition of tax dollar value. So what would, what would that be? Just help me understand that. The column of tax dollar value.
Yes, that goes back to being fiscally responsible in our, in our strategic plan. I don't have the actual wording for that goal.
For example, if we look at the twelve thirteenth Street Stormwater Project in Bay Drive, that, that got a zero. It did not get a one. So what was the thought process on that?
If I compare about it or compare it to.
Is it based on like what was budgeted and what it actually costs?
Let's see, I'm trying to, so I took projects, yeah, I, I kind of weighted out on where the costs of the project. And if, like, like say, I gave undergrounding because it was using, you know, infrastructure funds. Like the accelerated five-year stormwater project was because it was the idea of that project coming together to, to lower the costs over. The, you know, some of the stuff like that we did in-house, you know, I said tax, tax dollar value, you know, like some of the things that we did with the volunteers. As far as like just a straightforward.
So the twelve thirteenth.
Like just purchasing the playground, I didn't see any tax dollar values in that, the city hall generator. You know, that, I mean, and that's something that, you know, maybe we could refine more how, how it's scored. But I, you know.
A term from the strategic plan, though, I think it is. So I think we probably need to look at the strategic plan while we're looking at this to see some of the definitions of these terms. I think you pulled it from.
It's kind of your cheat sheet.
Yeah, yeah.
But the interpretation of that is, it's basically being, getting the best bang for our buck. So that was my scoring.
Yeah, it's kind of subjective what it gets, so that's fine. I was just curious on the twelfth and thirteenth street stormwater project. So that was a miss under tax dollar value. I was just curious how you came to that conclusion that that was a miss.
Right.
Make sense?
Right.
I mean, was it because that it, it exceeded the budget, the budgeted dollars, or did it have anything to do with that at all?
In my mind, possibly, yeah. You know, it did come out rather high, but I'm not, I'm not saying that there's exact criteria that I was basing that on or not.
And it's not a value, it's just, it applies or it doesn't, correct? That's the one or the zero, it just.
Yeah, it's just, and that's just my scoring, so.
Right, it's a hit or miss.
So if the staff's doing it, it's, it's covered in our, already our overhead expenses that we have budgeted. If we're getting penny for Pinellas on this Gulf Boulevard Undergrounding, it's saving us a lot of funds because Penny for Pinellas is paying for it. So that's your interpretation.
That was, yes.
Is that it's not costing the city the entire amount to get the project complete. We've got some savings.
Yes, and I, I guess I would apply that if we had a project that we were able to obtain a, a grant funding from, then it would be like, okay, we're getting a little bit more.
I get to want.
And so the, the goals hit, what, that, that doesn't mean completed. That means that this falls into these buckets, these goals of the strategic plan.
This out of five, this is how many it covered. Okay, and as you can see, the only one, I, I just thought that code enforcement project, it really kind of involves everything. And I think that's why, you know, back to the description of the city manager goal, that, that was a key.
I like this. Are you planning on putting this on the website, you said?
Yes.
Okay, great. Any other questions or comments on this, suggestions or?
One minor little kind, we get shirt turn rituals there and shirt turn rituals there.
Okay.
Do we care?
No, we do. I, we do. That's just something, overtime, I played with this for hours, you know, like arranging and everything.
Vice Mayor Shirley, you look like you had.
I just have one question and it is not related to this, but an item on here in the undergrounding. This is the entire Gulf Boulevard, our, our remaining share of it, right? We're not just north-south now, we're just talking about undergrounding the entire Gulf Boulevard. I just want to be clear on that because there's been.
Yeah, I, that, this is for this year. So this is talking about phase one, phase two of the east side of Gulf Boulevard. So maybe I should make more.
Yeah, because that's, yeah, the interpretation is.
Just add phase one or north or south or whatever.
Phase one is everything south of the light, correct?
Correct. South of causeway and phase two is north.
And when will we start looking at those goals out beyond phase one? Because that's still kind of an open-ended.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Could it be, when are those goals, or, you know, we're already into twenty-three? Well into twenty-three, when will we start setting goals beyond twenty-five?
I mean, I guess if I can think of projects, we have.
I guess whenever we're going to review the strategic plan would be a better question, right? Can we get that on the next work session? Can we start tackling that? Because you're going to need to know.
Yeah, that's true.
Coming down the pike to have plans for that.
I agree. Yeah, we definitely need to, I mean, this is telling us what we're in, what we already have planned. And we just kind of need to set our goals for the future. A lot of them we already have, it's just they're, they're not in progress. And I think also the, the bond we're doing is going to drastically change this. So we'll have new goals. Questions or comments?
Next work session.
Okay, all right, great.
This is good.
Last chance before we move on to item number three. Item three, discussion on Triton diesel generator for the community center. This was placed on the agenda by City Manager Reefer.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So, yes, I sent these estimates and specs out, it was a couple of weeks ago. And so that we were discussing, discussing in this work session. It includes two options. The first option is the the original one that we were budgeting for the natural gas on a elevated generator stand in the back of the building to connect to our existing transfer switch. And then the second option is what we kind of moved towards down the road was the mobile option, which was a diesel. And I could, I had it as used, but it is not used. I kind of lost that over the course of all the estimates, but it is a new generator. And some of the things, some of the questions we had from the last work session when we talked about it were the maintenance adders. That the amount of, you know, increasing the amount of fuel in the in the diesel generator for longer stored runtime. And then the, a lot of the maintenance testing, so I try, I had those questions answered for these two. And if you look at the natural gas generator, that that would be set up sort of like the mayor was talking about, his his home generator. Where it would, it would automatically run through tests throughout the year. And then there would be the maintenance planning, including the 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 staff to come out and and run a load test on it once a year, which would, they said would be adequate for that generator. The mobile generator, they thought would need to be on a quarterly start test function, which would have to be done manually because it's not an automated system like the natural gas. And then same thing, it would have a load, a load test annually. And then that as far as the tank adders go, there was two different tank adders for the mobile option. The the baseline tank that was quoted was a six hundred and eighty liter. And then there was was a three, you could switch out, it wasn't in addition to that six hundred and eighty liters. There was, it was an alternate tank that was either three hundred and fifty gallons or four hundred and fifty gallons. And if you're lucky, you get an extra hundred gallons for not very much more compared to that base price. So if calculating the hundred percent output, you're going to get it over five days runtime. I know that was a something we were considering, we wanted to look at the options running that diesel. And then as far as the storage, I mean, you know, there's really like council member banker said, there's, you know, you can only kind of maintain this diesel for so long using additives and things like that. So that's just something to consider when looking at a diesel option. And, you know, we could, we could always have it fueled up. And I, and I didn't, I don't know if there is, and I wanted to look into a way to recycle diesel or to.
You can buy a polishing system to polish the fuel.
Okay.
Not being used.
So that's just something I wanted to consider, that maintenance of the fuel. So I think I presented everything that we were kind of discussing in the last work session related to the generators.
Council.
Think before we spend any of this money, we ought to be looking into our stormwater projects that are coming up. See if we can resolve our stormwater form that we're in twenty twenty-three right now that we're not using the same ideas they had seventy years ago. So I think the money would be better spent to use for stormwater than for a generator that'll be nice to cool the building down for a few hours a night. But better to have the water there instead of my backyard or my.
Thank you, Mr. Banker. Other comments?
I apologize, on the Cummins, is that one new or is that used as well? That's new?
Yes.
And then on the, on the Zabot one or Zappet.
Or Miss Livingstone, is your microphone off?
I apologize. And, okay, so the Cummins is new and Zabot is used.
Yep, the Triton.
So on the Triton, it looks like, I just have that marked, that's the one where the estimate expires this week.
It might, yeah, because I think they're only doing it a two or three weeks.
Fifteen day.
Yeah, but as you can see, it held, that price held from the last time, which was. Then you can see, I mean, I know that the lead out time for shipment. If we went with the base option, it's a six hundred and eighty liter tank, it it's in stock with a one-week ship time. But if you look, if you add, if you do some of the fuel tank adders, or at least I don't think you listed it here, that was going to be more of a of a ten-week time for shipping. And then let's see, on I believe the the natural gas was further out, but I thought you put it on there.
Yeah, it was thirty thirty days for the Cummins. Yeah, I was just, this Zabot said quote expires fifteen days from issue date and it was issued on four four. So that means, I mean, unless they push it through again.
Our current production lead time. Got fifty weeks on there.
Or I was referring to this about.
Okay. So the natural gas, there would, there would be some long wait time.
So just out of pure ignorance, give me the background on generators with the city of Bel Air Beach. Have we had generators on this building? I keep hearing about a pad that was out there for a previous generator. What did it generate? How often was it used? Have we used it? Have we been out in the building ever since we moved in here that we couldn't operate or during storm, lost the ability to do anything because we had no power? I know that's a lot of questions.
No, to my knowledge, I mean, historically, the the biggest storm this building has faced was Irma. And it happened to knock out most of the city and this building locked out, being on a different grid, I guess. And it actually kept its power. As far as the history of a generator, I think that they had a generator before the building was built and they installed the transfer switch to be compatible with that generator. It was a diesel and it it didn't have its own pot, its own pad, but it was mobile. And over time, I don't know how it was determined, if it's in the minutes anywhere, but it was, it was given to the Pinellas Sun Coast Fire Rescue.
Generator was?
Generator was, yes.
And I I think that that one was not maintained, is that right?
I I think that was part of it, I don't think.
And and also, I believe it was, wasn't it used to begin with?
I don't know, I'd have to look.
Okay.
I'd say yes, but.
Yeah, thi- this conversation actually began in the last council, if you recall. And it it was, there was a little controversy behind it. And it was, it was kind of a fifty fifty, I think. I think ultimately, in the last council, it it went ahead, we wanted to move forward with it. But we never made any progress on on actually getting something done. And then whenever we came in on this council, we decided to continue the conversation. And the goal was for public safety and for relief. Because even though this building had power that, you know, during Irma, there's always possibility that we would have something bigger and there would be no power at all. So it was to keep the city hall open and also to provide not shelter, but temporary relief and supplies, cold water, you know, batteries, whatever. Yes, Mr. Banker.
Is this grid line not enacted towards the causeway and Gulf Boulevard? It's a priority. You know what I'm saying? They're going to energize priority before they energize neighbors. So what I'm saying is for a building like this to be down for a long time, it would be a real, real catastrophe where windows would probably be blown out of here and everything. The generator, the useless, but if it was like Irma, which was a bad storm, we still didn't lose power. So are we just investing in something that we really, really may not be?
I haven't had to use mine yet. Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, what is this building rated for? Do we know, like category five, category four? Buildings are typically rated, you know, to be able to.
I believe it was a cat. Four, I would say, but I I definitely, let me look into that. I know that the base, it was built of a twelve feet elevation.
Right. Is based on wind, wind speed.
Right.
So category five, category four, category three, that is going to survive. Because council member Banker has a good point. If if we get hit with a four or a five directly here, it doesn't matter about the generator. Because we're we're gone, this building's gone, the houses are gone. Nobody's coming back just to try to stay in this building to be in air conditioning. So that being said, I think, I think it is our responsibility to look to see. That's why it was for the used approach first, because it was lower cost. To spend a lot of money on something that we may or may not ever use. I mean, basically, it's going to be used in a scenario where, you know, it really doesn't hit here. But because it hits somewhere else, transfer centers and in due, we lose power here. So it's kind of cool that if this building was still up and running because of the generator and people could could still be here, I mean, maybe in scenarios where we're told we can't even cross the bridge, we're out. You know, go somewhere else and they're not going to allow us back in. So even if this building has air conditioning and things like that, people can't get back to use it, nor do they want to. Because they've already gone somewhere else to relatives or another town or something like that. So that that was my initial question about could we get something used at a lower cost since it may not be used that much or ever. That that was my whole question about the cost.
Other comments?
I'm with Councilman Roberts, I was well stated.
So is the council leaning towards killing this completely? Or looking at used or looking at new natural gas? Or is it something you'd like to table and discuss after hurricane season?
I'd like to table it until we get the stormwater stuff figured out.
It doesn't seem like that's going to be a problem, is that correct? That we're going to be fully funded for our stormwater projects. Now, I understand what he's wanting is going to require more money and and basically digging up. You have to change a lot. And I I understand your desire to to have this collection pond and these pumps and everything. But I don't see that happening in our community because of the, you would have to tear up everyone's property to make that happen, is that right?
Well, I I brought up, I've had discussions, preliminary discussions with two engineering firms about the combined stormwater projects that we're doing. And I have brought up the idea of the council member Banker said with the retention tanks. And and the general feedback I've gotten is that it it'll be very expensive, but I'm not saying, I'm just giving them that idea to to consider. Not as part of what we're doing with these projects, but bringing it up with bringing up Seventh Street as like, okay, we ran into this problem. You know, looking at the the future BMPs, I'm like the lowest outfall of projects we haven't done yet would probably be Ninth Street. And I wanted to bring up the problem that we're experiencing at Seventh Street of if there's a design, something we can do differently. To prevent that from being like that. And 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 I I do want, you know, I I'm I have the construction set, I couldn't find exact as built of Seventh Street, but what I was told by the engineer who worked on it is that the construction set, there was very little changes. So I am giving that to the engineering firms just for ideas of trying to solve this, the issue we're having at Seventh Street without low outfall.
Yes, Mr. Zabel.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if you've ever brought that up to the big C, but ask the other mayors, do they have generators in their city halls? I mean, the ones that are kind of coastal.
I can certainly ask.
Yeah, because that kind of gives a good direction, I mean, Councilman Roberts brought it right out. If if it really does hit, everything's wiped. Otherwise, you know, we should have enough power here and see what the other city halls do.
And as far as the portable diesel generator goes, if it, if we ran into circumstance where we had to use it just out of the box or or the default configuration, you only get, what, less than forty-eight hours?
Oh, the, yeah, the the original baseline.
And then if you spend the extra money and you get the larger tanks, well, then maybe you get five days. But by now, I mean, by that time, you've spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars roughly trying to put this configuration together. And there's always the the possibility that something could go wrong, it it could, in towing, it could, something could happen to it. I like the idea of of looking into a discounted option, but I don't think I don't think that it's a good idea for us to be lugging something that large around. And and do we even have something that would pull that? Or would it take a, like a big rig?
Yeah, that that's all we'd have to use that John Deere, but I'd still have to check.
The problem is when you don't run an engine gives you problems.
Yeah.
And the only way is to drain everything out of it. And then, you know, a storm's coming for us and then it switches.
Right.
So.
Vice Mayor Shirley.
Just then added, there's no guarantee when you have a hard piped natural gas line that it's going to remain active during a storm. They're often turned off.
And I'll tell you from first firsthand experience on non-diesel gens, I ran over ten thousand of these in Iraq. And you better have maintenance on pretty much twenty-four seven if you wanted to work. Because you talk about water in the fuel, high humidity, and you guys run diesel engines out here, they're a pain to maintain.
High humidity, I think that's what we are.
Pretty much. Yeah, it's, that's a, that's a nightmare for diesel.
What's, what's our current, right now, how much money do we have set aside for the generator project?
So this year, we totaled two hundred and fifty thousand in savings. So it doesn't need to be spent on that, but we did like a two-year savings.
Okay.
Hundred and twenty-five each.
Council, let's, let's go around the room. Should we consider killing this and repurposing for something else? Vice Mayor Shirley.
I'm in favor of killing it and repurposing that money somewhere else.
Councilmember Livingstone.
I'm in agreement.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Banker.
I just like to use the word table.
Killing, burying. I like to do that, yeah, I agree with them, but with the Attic House, so if you just ask the big C and any other city halls are doing it.
Mr. Notaro.
Kill it.
Okay, you know what, I'll agree. Let's just, we'll we'll find something else to do with that money, right? Hey, now we're up to item four, let me see here, yeah, we're still fine. Item four, discussion of merit increase for city manager. This was added to the agenda by councilmember Zabel. Mr. Zabel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As brought up, we had a lot of questions going into hiring Kyle as a city manager. And we've worked with him, we've had all these ideas. And frankly, I mean, at least to my, no, she's knocked it out of the park. Toward that end, I really don't want to wait till later. I mean, he's, he's doing everything we've asked for him right now. That's why I proposed, it's time to get that merit increase now, not wait for a two-year period.
Counsel. Mr. Bankard.
I mentioned that at the last meeting that he deserves a raise. I didn't like the two-year freeze when we promoted him. I think you're doing an excellent job. Not one complaint. You always have an answer and would I like it? When you don't have an answer, you'll say you'll get one.
Uh, Mr. Bankard, I'm going to have to correct you. There have been plenty of complaints from citizens. I can assure you.
Oh, yes, you have.
Oh, yeah. I stand corrected.
All right, I'm, I'm going to make a comment on this right quick. Uh, I am not object to, uh, looking into this. However, I'm going to, I'm going to pull a Vice Mayor Shirley, show me the numbers. Where are the numbers at to back up this argument? Because we, um, I, I thought that we were making a very fair, uh, and adequate salary at the time that we gave you the increase. And, uh, I need a refresher course. I have no evidence in front of me to support this argument this time. Other comments?
Well, he's been attending a lot of city manager meetings. I don't know what your age is. I'm not, don't really care, but, uh, in my opinion, he's young compared to me. Um, he's making himself known. Um, he doesn't live right here. Someone might come out there and try to say, hey, Kyle, why don't you entertain our city? Throw you another 10, $20,000, 10 miles closer to your home. Showing that you can do this job. I think we grab him and I think we sign to a contract. Give him a three, four percent, three to five percent raise. He deserves it. Um, we were willing to pay the other guy one hundred grand. We're still saving money. Take the money out of the generator fund.
Mr. Roberts.
I agree about seeing some of the numbers. I think Kyle's doing a great job at the time, and I can't remember what happened last week hardly then, the last time we talked about those numbers. But we were comparing to other cities in the area to see what those salaries were out there and what the experience time and position was for those particular city managers. So it would be nice. Councilmember Zabel, if we could kind of see those as we compared to what other people were making and just to see what makes sense. That's all.
Councilmember Livingstone, you have any comments?
Yes, I do. Um, I'm in agreement with you as far as we need to see some figures. We are stewards of the citizens' money. However, that being said, I'm also an advocate for annual increases. Um, I don't know, I wasn't here when you did the two-year and I don't know why it was put into place and maybe some history on that. Um, but I'm a big advocate of annual and he'll reach his annual, what in, is it November? Um, so that'll give us plenty of time to review the, the data, if that's the way you decide.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Shirley.
Yeah, if you recall, um, well, first off, I wasn't in favor of paying the other guy more money. So I'll just start with that. Wasn't in favor of the other guy. Um, but, um, I, when we made the decision to bring Kyle on, I, you know, it was a great decision. Kyle's doing, you're doing a wonderful job. Um, we did have some areas where he had the lack of experience or education that many wanted, doesn't mean a thing to me. So my, my olive branch was, hey, let's take that first year, first couple of years and work through some of these certificate programs. And I believe that's what he's doing. And so he's carrying his end of the bargain and I'm prepared to carry my end of the bargain. And that is, you know, you keep doing what you're doing, get through these certificate programs and, and then we'll evaluate. And that was kind of the thought process when he was brought on. So and let, you know, so my, my feeling is yes, I'll look at anything, but I am one to, I make an agreement. I agree to it. And I hold to it.
To that end, and, and because member Livingstone wasn't a member, I do want to, uh, make clear that, um, Mr. Reefer does have a contract, an employment contract. It is a three-year contract term. Section four of the contract addresses salary, just because I don't know that the baseline has been articulated. Uh, for the first two years of the agreement, the city agrees to compensate Mr. Reefer in the annual amount of $115,000 for her services at city manager, paid on a bi-weekly basis, dotted up. Beginning in the third year of the contract term, manager is entitled to an increase in base salary as determined by the city council. The increase shall take effect on the anniversary date of the agreement. So in the third year of the agreement, same annual percentage as other city employees. Um, the renewal will remain subject, however, to satisfactory performance evaluations, et cetera. Um, as you talk about, and, and this is just a, a good, um, contextualization moment, as you talk about his annual, um, uh, date is in November and we can revisit it then, you're doing, you're, you're presently beginning stages of doing your budget or for fiscal year 23, 24, and that would be something that it would be most prudent to provide for in whatever budget you adopt on first and second reading in September of this year. Um, so if you're contemplating a change to the contract, that would mean an increase at any point before the third year. Um, that would now would be a, a good time to discuss that if that any point is coming up. But I did want to make sure everybody had that same context.
Thank you, Mr. Mora. Councilmember Notaro, you have any comment?
I agree with what Vice Mayor Shirley said. The contract is as it was and we should stick to it.
I, um, I, I still think that, uh, I mean, we'll still be doing a yearly review and, and we'll be able to kind of gauge his progress and, uh, uh, I say that we revisit it again at that time. Fair enough?
Yes, sir. Just to note, he's been doing his job since June of what last year? Going for a year.
And I had to call the old city manager once.
Yeah.
I, I, I think.
Correct.
I think, uh, whenever he left, he was done.
He was, yeah, yeah. I think he had one phone call. That was about it.
Maybe so. All right. Um, if there's no other comments on that particular topic, we're actually doing pretty good on time. Why don't, why don't we take a break? Let's just go ahead and knock that break out and then we'll come back. Uh, track here, uh, Patty, it's, uh, seven 23. And Mr. Mora is back. So, uh, all right. So now we're on to item number five, the discussion of sending letter from the city of Bel Air Beach to the hoteliers.
Very good.
Of Clearwater regarding traffic and congestion. This was placed on the agenda by Councilmember Zabel. Mr. Zabel.
Well, um, I thought about this and I think all of us at one time and I was looking at the traffic and we're really the linchpin. You know, if we go down, so does Clearwater. Um, jokingly, I think I told somebody what we should do is, uh, put it signs up saying, you know, dead end, you know, no throughput, but we can't, you can't go to a, another city council and expect them to act on our behalf. Because frankly, everything there is paid by the hotel. So maybe another route is businesses are very receptive when one organization contacts indirectly, for example, fire. I mean, hey, they contacted us nicely, uh, perhaps. And again, I'm just shooting at windmills on this one is send them a letter. Um, I know a letterhead under signed directly to the general managers of each of these hotels. And this is a, a draft shot. Um, saying, come on down, um, you know, talk to us. We have a lot of concerns with how much traffic you're putting through our city. Um, we're the main route other than Clearwater Bridge. I mean, you all know the problem. So I've just, it's a shotgun out there, you know? Yes, no, it's an attempt. So.
Counsel.
One thing I did was the last couple, when I first got on council, people were addressing this.
Yeah.
So last couple months, especially during spring break, from 10 o'clock in the morning to two o'clock in the afternoon, heavy, heavy traffic. And I'm talking, it's all the way backed up from the Chevron station, Eighth Street on East, on West Bay. So I took my scooter down. You know where 90% of the traffic goes? In the San Key Park. And if you go into San Key Park, it fills up all four parking spots from like Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Now, go back down there around six o'clock at night and a lot of people are going across the bridge into Clearwater for whatever dinner. But that San Key Park is, I think, the biggest horn in our side. I don't know how you would eliminate that. And, and the parking there is, I swear, it said five hours for the, five hours till sunset. Which is ridiculous in my opinion, but I mean, that parking lot gets overly abundant. And they have weddings there. They, I mean, the beaches are packed. And it's just, it's just a constant filter, making a left-hand turn from, uh, Gulf War.
So I, uh, I was caught in the traffic Saturday. Sure, that's what day it was. And, uh, there was a huge backup. It started, uh, at Indian Rocks Beach, uh, where everyone is, uh, you've got right turns, left turns, and you've got straight in and it's all filtering in. And, uh, the bridge was backed up all the way to the next traffic light, which was, which is our traffic light. Uh, funny thing is, is as soon as the light changed and I hopped in that traffic, we were going again. We were actually moving. It's not the same direction. And the reason why we're having more, I think the main reason why we're having so many backups is because of the timing of the traffic light and how, I always get turned around in here, but yeah, you're headed, headed towards, uh, Indian Rocks Beach. The light changes and that's where all the traffic's coming from. We have it coming from across the bridge and you have it coming from here. It's actually holding every, the traffic light is holding everybody back. As soon as you get past the traffic light, it opens up. So all of this traffic problem is benefiting San Key and Clearwater Beach. And we're all getting smacked for, uh, to, to make it better for north of Bel Air Beach.
You said traffic going to Indian Rocks Beach. Are you talking about Indian Rocks Road or Indian Rocks Beach?
No, no, traffic's coming from Indian Rocks Beach.
Okay.
And, and I think probably what's happening is, uh, they're either, they're, they're tourists that are staying in that area and they're going to the cool, the cool place. Or, um, or that's an alternate route also to avoid traffic coming in.
They're coming over that walls and ham bridge. I mean,
Probably so.
That's very backed up too.
Yeah.
Is there a, since you looked into, is there an association that has all these hotels underneath, you know, like a,
There are organizations like that. Off the top of my head, I don't remember. Yeah, there's hotel associations, but.
Yeah, I'm just saying that for Clearwater because.
And I'm just thinking, you know, being a nice neighbor, hey, you know, we, we got an impact.
Well, I, I've been here nine years and I think they destroyed Clearwater, in my opinion. They used to have all these mom and pop hotels on there and now they tore them all down. And now they just make them higher and higher and higher and higher.
Right.
They bring more and more people. But I think the people, I think the people that are going to the hotels aren't using our bridge. I think they're going in through 60. I think the people going in for the nightly entertainment are using our.
I don't know, because I see, uh, Saturday morning, they're all coming in. There, it's, everybody's coming in and Sunday evening, everybody's leaving. So I, I believe they are staying tonight. And, uh, it's, I, I don't have a problem signing this and sending it on, but I have a feeling they're just going to tell us to pound sand.
Well, at least we tried.
What are we asking for?
Where do you send it? Where do you send it to get some?
Well, I, I think the, the, the problem is, is that, uh, that there's several problems. Um, and please chime in.
Yeah, this is just.
Uh, I, I attend, uh, many meetings around the, uh, the county and, uh, and I speak to the mayors on the Big C and, uh, uh, Sun Coast and, and the mayor's council. And, um, I, I think really the problem is, is that Pinellas County is hell bent on bringing as many people into the county for tourism as they possibly can. Because make a, wrap a ton of money off of it. The, the, and what happens is even though we get a little bit of money, we don't really care. It's not enough to, for the, the inconvenience that we have. And, 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 and one of the, the things that I've been trying to do is to, to get myself inserted to where we have more of a voice. So I'm, I'm trying to get on, uh, the, uh, tourist development council. And, uh, with, with me being there, I can put more of an emphasis on giving a sand rather than, than bringing in more tourists. Uh, because really at the end of the day, it's the beaches that brought everybody here in the first place. And, um, you know, the, the tourist development council, their, their main focus right now is baseball stadiums and uh, sports complexes and, uh, the Dolly Museum. And, um, I, I think that little towns like us, we need fair representation. Otherwise this is just going to keep happening and eventually our property value is going to be worth nothing because no one's going to want to live here. But as far as this goes, I, I'm all for signing this and sending it on. And, uh, who, who does you, you're sending this to Wyndham. I say we do it to all of them just to see if we get anything.
Again, I just a dra- draft. This is rough. I mean, he does. Is there an association you can send it to? Is what I'm saying.
What are we asking for? What are we asking them to do?
Really know if, I, I don't know if they're really going to care.
Yeah.
I mean, you're asking them to, to, to spend money, uh, to help us whenever that they don't really, there's no incentive for them to do that.
The problem lies in permitting and we have no say in them issuing permit. The only play, only time they're going to spend money is when they need a permit. And their impact fees don't require them to put walkovers. That's, I mean, that would solve a lot of the problem. The roundabout backs up. People can't get through that way. Um, but they allow pedestrians to cross the road wherever the heck they please, which stops traffic, stops traffic here, stops traffic at the top of the bridge. No one is using walkovers the way they should. It's, and a lot of the times I think we're backed up and we're not. It's just that crosswalk up there at the top of the bridge that people randomly press the button and we end up backing up the bridge for, or the traffic beyond the bridge. So it's hard to tell, but we're not going to get anything from these guys. That's, I mean, and they.
You know?
I'm sorry, hold on.
Um, it's, you know, he says, we'd like to hear your plans for removing this burden, which pretend you're the hotel guy. What could he do? You know, what could he do? It's, it got worse when they built the roundabout up there. It used to be fine. You know, we used to have a toll on these bridges. I don't know if you guys remember them. There used to be a toll.
Don't say that.
But, you know, I don't think they could do anything. I would not be in favor of sending this to any of the hotel people.
I hate to say that. Toll thing is probably the only solution.
Well, actually my, uh, if I had my way, we would build a bridge at San Key. That's what we would do and send it right back over to 60. And then that way they have a loop. Uh, because, uh, many people, they, they get on the south end. It's terrible to have to turn around and make your way all the way. If you just want to go through and see what's happening. Um, I think that that's, I, I've already asked Ford Pinellas to, to, to start considering it. Uh, and as you know, it probably takes 20 years to get anything done, but it, we need to start now. And so, uh, we're, we're actually, the big C is, uh, putting in hopefully David Will, who is just like us, a tiny town, uh, to represent our type of communities on Ford Pinellas. Uh, because if you're already a tourist town and you enjoy this, what we're going through, and this is what your, your idea of making it better is bigger, well, that's not really the voice for Bel Air Beach. So we need to be represented fairly and, and, uh, I think that's really the only way we're going to make any headway. If, if any at all, um.
No disrespect, Mike.
No.
I, I think, I think the answer is going to be you chose to live on a resorted beach island.
Yeah. But also I was, you know, from day one, I've always had, you lose a hundred percent of the races that you don't run.
I mean, maybe we just try, I mean, hey, give it a shot.
I, whenever I complained at, at Ford Pinellas and it's, you know, explained the, the dilemma that we face every weekend. I was quickly corrected by the, uh, the mayor of Dunedin. She said, do you receive pennies for Pinellas money? Uh, she said, do you receive pennies for Pinellas money? And I went, yes. And then I, 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 cause I didn't have any numbers. I wasn't armed with numbers. I was just complaining about the traffic. I came home, had a, a brief conversation with Kyle about it. And I think it's six hundred bucks a day. That, that's what we get for all of this.
Aggravation.
Aggravation. So, um, with David, with Mayor Will, if, if he is, uh, brought in by Pinellas County, uh, then, uh, he'll be able to speak. Uh, because I have an arsenal of pictures. Every time I'm caught out there, whenever I'm on the boat, anytime that I see traffic, I'm taking pictures like crazy. And, uh, and I don't think they understand what we're really going through.
Yeah, but the catch twenty-two is we don't have a state income tax. Okay, so we rely on the tourists. So.
But the tourism money goes through the bed tax, which goes to,
The city that the beds in.
Yeah, the city that the beds in, regardless of.
Let, let me tell you, um, Tennessee doesn't have state income tax either. Um, but you know what? Um, if you live somewhere away from those areas, then, you know, it's just where, I guess it's where we live, but.
Well, and a lot of it is, I mean, they're beachgoers. They're not all hotel attenders. So, you know, I mean, you can just, just as you said, uh, Sand Key Park is busy. Go past the beach and Clearwater Beach and the chairs are back to back to back to back. I mean, you can't, I don't know how you even walk to the beach, but.
Back to my original suggestion, road work. Dead end sign. Come take our sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, another, um, suggestion that's, that's being, uh, talked about right now is, is limiting the amount of cars that are allowed to go to Clearwater Beach. Uh, building massive parking lots on the mainland side. And making everybody park there and forcing them to come over on a ferry or a bus or something else. But.
They're actually doing that now with free beach busing. You ever see that? You go down, Edgewater driving that. It says, park here, free transportation.
Yeah, it's, it, the problem is, is most people wanna ma- make it all the way to the end and have their car right there until it's mandated. Uh, it's, I don't think it'll ever take hold.
Unless it's something cool like a gondolier or something like that, that people wanna make the, the journey on, right? Yeah, yeah, they're not gonna, I mean, they do have the ferry that goes over, but.
And he has so much stuff to take with him to the beach.
All right, so. So we've got this in front of us. Uh, would anyone like to, uh, uh, sign this? Want me to sign it and send it on or, uh, as is? Do we wanna make any edits or do we just wanna?
Right. Yeah, I mean, I probably, somebody brought it up, so I probably just hold off on this.
Can we see if there's an association?
Yeah. Okay.
Hotel Association.
Yeah. And I, uh, I, I'm actually, uh, meeting, uh, with, uh, Renee Flowers tomorrow and, uh, Bill Queen, uh, down in North Reddington Beach. So I will ask him because he, uh, knows quite a bit more about hotels than I did.
You ever notice when we, when my wife and I go out to there and we don't even go into Clearwater anymore at this time of year? We go south and I swear to you, the, the traffic is a lot better from Indian shores down.
It is.
To Charger Island, even, even St. Pete.
It's also, uh, four lanes. No, yes, it's, it's four lanes with turn lanes.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if it makes any difference, but Gulf Boulevard is not, it's not our road. It's a county road. I mean, it, does that make a difference in what we, you know, how we deal with this? Well, and we're not, we're not going ahead and sending it now. Is that correct?
No.
Okay.
Well, maybe she just hit the, uh, nail on the head. Can we go after the county for additional funds?
I, 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 I don't. Well, you see, we don't contribute because we don't have the bed tax. We're not charging a bed tax. If we are, it's very little. Uh, because, because we're not a, this is not a hotel industry community.
But as she noted, it's a county road, which I brought up before. And they're using the county road to go through Bel Air Beach, Bel Air Shores. Is Bel Air, I, I, Bel Air Shore should be on, in this fight with us as well.
Yeah, because all their driveways open right up on.
Absolutely.
I don't think that they're gonna join us on anything.
Hey, you had, you had Commissioner Bloom when they put that, uh, double line it saying it took him twenty minutes to get out of his driveway the one day, you know? So I don't think he's happy with it.
Well, um, I, I'm not really sure what, what the good answer is other than to just keep making waves and making noise. I think that that's the only, all the, uh, power that we have at this time. And there are, there are other ways that you can complain or, or get things done, such as demanding that you build garages over there and make people use them. You know, there, there's, uh, it's just gonna take time. Eventually, they're gonna hit a saturation point. I will say this, that, uh, a resident, I won't mention his name, uh, brought it to my attention that he believes that, um, that the city of Clearwater is, uh, violating Florida law by what they're doing. And I, uh, can't back that up. And I'm saying it on record though.
What are we doing what?
By, by basically, uh, putting in too many, allowing too many people in too small of an area and not having the infrastructure to, uh, to support it. And that includes the roads. So they're, they're actually creating a safety hazard.
And they are.
Yeah. But, but how do you undo it? You know, once it's built, how do you, what do you do then?
Once you have a permit and a CEO, you're not getting anything from those hotel owners.
All right, so let's move on to, uh, item number six.
That's kind of an easy one.
As discussion to evaluate the city council representation to the Pinellas County Flood Risk and Mitigation Public Information Working Group. Uh, affectionately known as the FRMPIWG.
The front wig. Um, yeah, what I found is reading through all the details, there was a little listing in there that had two members from the city of Bel Air Beach that were appointed to this. One is Kyle, the city manager, but the other one was Marv Bean. And what I'm recommending, and I probably got two people here that I'd love to recommend for the position. Marv Bean. Former councillor. Is recommend that he be removed and replaced with your, you know, councillor, banker or councillor Roberts. I mean, you guys are on top of the flood stuff and have a representative there that works on hurricanes and floods and.
Why wouldn't? I'm glad you brought this up because this is like a thorn and I was gonna write to Rick Scott's guy today because he hasn't responded back. And I know I'm part of the government now, which I never seen the government resolve any problems.
Teach your own dog food.
I like that one. Hope it's out. When the, when this legislation had that session last year, to resolve a, uh, insurance problem, they made it even worse. So now Citizens is the only one who'll write flood insurance in this area. You can now go and get another private insurance that'll write home and flood. Or not home and wind. Those costs are anywhere from twenty to forty thousand dollars a year. That's not including flood. Okay, so Citizens now has a half a trillion dollars in unfunded liabilities. Last, not, not last year, twenty twenty-one, there was a hundred and sixty-one thousand fraudulent roof claims. I don't think anyone went to prison over it though, right? So all the, all the state legislation did was saying, okay, we're gonna modify a lot of the lawsuits and everything like that, that the people will get the money instead of attorneys. But the problem is, I'm getting calls from all over about I can't afford my flood insurance. I can't afford my wind insurance. I can't afford my homeowner insurance. I just got a call today, my home insurance, my homeowner's insurance doubled. Okay, no one wants to write here. This, this is a mess. This is, this is gonna draw, this is gonna take our property values and plummet them. Because our homeowner's insurance, if you have a, thank, thank God I, my, my home's paid for. But if you have to have a homeowner's insurance, wind insurance and flood insurance, you're talking at least twenty-some thousand dollars a year just to insure your house now. And that is a lot of money. Now, Representative Beerfield, she's working on this. De Seglia has not returned one call.
He won't.
You won't.
He shook his head before he got his name out. But no, he, he doesn't care. I mean, but she's very concerned about it. But we don't have any private insurers in this, in this state anymore. And they're just all fleeing and it's, and it's not because, I, I think it's all because of fraud. It's, these insurance adjusters are just killing us.
It's, uh, it's, it's because of, uh, it's because, uh, court cases, court battles, I believe. I believe that's, that's part of the problem.
These drones, they go down these neighborhoods. Hey, you got a shingle missing. One new roof. Thirty thousand dollars later, you get a new roof and then boom, you know? For twenty, for twenty-dollar repair.
Yeah, the, uh,
I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah.
But.
Between the storms and frivolous lawsuits, I think that that is, uh, I, I know that they're trying to address it. I've heard rumblings of it. Uh, the Florida Chamber, uh, I went to one of their meetings and they were talking about it. And that was supposed to be on Rick Scott's radar.
He had a meeting with FEMA, I think it was November. And he said, you know, my constituents are primarily retirees on fixed incomes. And it's true. He says, now you're giving them a choice. You wanna eat or you wanna insure your house? You know, and it, it's a hell of a risk. And this two-point-O, which was supposed to help us, it took the grandfathering out of a lot of the homes that are, um, like your house, you know what I'm saying, that are four feet, five feet above sea level. Um, but you're still supposed to get these twenty percent discounts. If you look at the two-point-O, depending on how high your house is above sea level, you, you probably know Baron, anybody Kyle, like two feet, three feet, four, it, it all goes by a percentage. No one wants to give you the discount.
Well, they, and they also aren't really, uh, forthcoming with the formula. To even figure out how they, how they calculate all that. I, I think, I think really the, the end game is to run us all out of town so that they can have more businesses. And, uh, I, I think that you just look at, at the trend of, of what's happening in the legislature. Look at what's happening with FEMA. Uh, it, it, it seems like we're just a target, no matter what.
I bought my house nine years ago, was under that bigger flood and, um, it was thirty thousand dollars to ensure.
We're being gentrified.
And, um, the realtor says, well, what we would like to do is wipe out houses like yours and build up, you know, condominiums, six plexes, eight plexes or whatever.
Well, I don't, uh, I don't, getting back on, on track here, I don't have a problem with, uh, either of you guys.
Wait, I'm advanced, Kyle. So you attend those meetings, Kyle?
Yes, um, there's about three per year. Um, we started the, the county's public information program during our verification cycle for CRS. Uh, because we needed to make up some points that, um, they were no longer providing that we probably most cities shouldn't have got anyway. So, yeah, we joined the, the group, um, which, you know, earned us some CRS points. And during the time, um, uh, Marv volunteered, you know, to be the stakeholder, um, for the group. Um, the requirement is you have to have fifty percent ratio. So if you have one staff member, you gotta have one stakeholder. Um, since we only have six staff members, I think it's best to have one and one, um, rather than having two and two because then, you know, it's just harder to meet that requirement. Or you just would have to, that's during the meeting. So if you did have two and two, if one person couldn't make it on one side, you, you'll, we'd have to have someone less.
So you can't have two staff members?
You, you could have two staff members, but you always need two stakeholders for that meeting.
Okay.
They just gotta maintain the ratio. It, um, it, it's explained in the, um, the report, the annual report that we presented in the last council meeting. But there's about three meetings per year. Um, they usually, uh, I wanna say Fridays at twelve-thirty, it's been the trend. Um, and, and Marv, um, you know, you can remotely log into them. So if you just have a Zoom connection, you don't have to be in the same room as me. Um, Marv tends to come in, but you could zoom in as well. And he's been on it for about two years. And what I was telling Members Abels, I don't, I don't think he'd have any issue with subbing out. You know, he was kinda doing it as a favor to the city.
Okay, it doesn't matter to me, yeah. I mean, if he's enjoying, enjoying doing it, does he like to do it, whatever he's doing?
Yeah, but, you know, he's, he's just involved. He, he'll, he'll come around and do other things.
I mean, I've never, that's why I read. With it though, I mean, is he very, whatever council does.
Um, but, you know, what, this is, this is public outreach. So the idea of the group is to get everybody, all the municipalities, I believe it's twenty-six in the county, with the county to be on the same page of the messaging.
Right.
That we provide. Um, and like I said, be, being part of the group, um, gives us points for what the county already does. So that helps us for some of the things they already invest money into and getting information out. And then we do our, we, you know, we have a, um, a spreadsheet that, you know, we say this is what we're doing in our community. Um, and we can always opt to do more as different ideas come about in the group. And the, and the thing is that, you know, the messaging's all the same. So we're not just creating our own message and giving it to our residents and something different in the town over.
So Marv has been attending all the meetings.
Yes.
Okay. All right, I, I don't really have a problem with, uh, with letting him stay unless, uh, the council objects. If he's doing the job, unless you prefer to have one of the, uh, council members, uh, represent us instead.
The reason I put this forward is by having a council member work it, they're seeing the numbers. I mean, tonight, we've already discussed the diesel generator, potential flood planning. Marv's not at our meetings. He's not a participant in our work sessions or our council sessions. Um, and he's done his work as a city councilman, appreciate it, but he doesn't regularly report. If he's had his chance for two years to come back and go, hey, here's, we got some problems. That's why I recommend, I mean, you two tonight, we're just, you laid out the case. Here's why we have to go forward, you know? The flood planning, the prevention, the streets. Um, and because you see the budget, you're an active participant in the entire process.
And the other problem with citizens, which I forgot to mention, is the new caveat is if you're gonna take citizens' win, you have to mirror your flood policy to that policy. So you, so they've taken the whole free market enterprise out of the whole system saying, hey, I don't even wanna insure my house for a hundred thousand dollars. Nope, you gotta insure it for two hundred, you know?
And the, the final point I bring up is when they speak up, they have their own thoughts. Those thoughts should be frankly, those of the elected community, the people that see the day-to-day and understand why we made these decisions. So they make a educated approach to these members and a strong, um, case for supporting our community. Here's why. Yeah, that's why I keep coming back to, you know, the council members.
Mike, I.
I know, preaching to the choir.
Agree with you because like I said, it's just gonna kill everything.
Yeah. So you two guys have my strongest support, whoever wants to do it. You know, if we do decide to go this way.
I'm Smear Shirley.
Are either of you interested in taking the position from Marv?
I don't know that much about it currently. I could look into it a little bit.
I only, I think Frank would do a great job. Marv wants to relinquish it. I don't, I, I like Marv more as a good guy. I mean, I wanna push him out.
I think, I just wanna be cautious that whenever we have residents involved that aren't elected officials, I like to keep them involved. You know, that's always my concern. So, so that's the only reason I'm asking. Because it, as you call them, a stakeholder, they are stakeholders in every decision we make. So it's impo, it's important in my eyes if we have people volunteering, stepping up to keep them in those positions. But I don't, I have this, I don't know anything about Marv's feeling on staying on and how much he would, you know, he would come report to us or is he, does he think Kyle's doing that? I don't know without having that conversation with Marv.
Well, I would like to change the requirement of the, uh, representation that whoever it is that represents us, they come into the following meeting or, uh, the council meeting at, following and give us a report. And if, and if they can't, if they can't appear personally, then I would like a written report. Uh, I think that that's the, uh, least that that person can do. So, uh, if it's okay with a council, would you mind, is, is it okay, uh, to reach? Is it okay uh, to reach out to uh, Marv and see if he's willing to do that? Or if he doesn't want to do it anymore? Or would the council just rather uh, send Mr. Bankard?
Something we also could try, I mean, just for the time being, because, you know, I can get Aaron, our community services um, administrator to fulfill the other role. And then let's get another council member involved in the meetings and you know, just for the next couple or so, and then see how we feel about it so that you have firsthand.
And uh, Mr. Bankard, I would encourage you to reach out to Mr. Beam and just have a conversation with him. Let him know your feelings. And uh, it seems like you have quite a bit of insight on this and uh, you may have information that he doesn't. Uh, so probably not a not a bad idea for the two of you to work together and and he may decide that you're the better candidate.
When's the next me?
Um, I will send that to you. Um, I think our last one was about, yeah, is it May? Yeah, I think our last one was in January. So it sounds right.
Surfing season.
Triannually.
All right. Any other discussion on this topic before we move on to general business? Oh. All right, we're actually doing pretty good tonight.
Yeah.
Um, item seven, general business. Um, I'm going to bring this one up. Uh, and I'm going to ask Mr. Mora to uh aid me in this one. Uh, so um, H, the House Bill thirty seven is coming up for a vote very soon. Uh, it was called something else in the Senate, but uh, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but uh, it's concerning financial reporting or financial disclosure of elected officials. Uh, is everyone here familiar with what's going on? Uh, Mr. Mora, are you prepared to kind of give us a quick summary?
Uh, the quickest summary that I can give you is my understanding where House Bill thirty seven and its Senate bill corollary are, that they've gone through all their committees in the respective chambers. They are on the House and Senate floor respectively to be voted on uh, by the full chambers. Uh, what these do is change your obligations as elected officials in a in a municipal jurisdiction from filing what is a, what you may know already as a Form One financial disclosure. Form One disclosures are very um, thirty thousand feet view of what are your assets and obligations. Uh, a Form Six is comparatively granular. It requires you to disclose assets in excess of a thousand dollars, liabilities in excess of a thousand dollars, shareholding interest in various companies and LLCs. It is a very detailed um, financial disclosure that is ultimately a record of the state. Um, the competing narratives, as I've said many times before in my job, it's just storytelling. The competing narratives are, we need this enhanced level of transparency and um, to to assure and protect against um, special interests and and corruption or any other number of things. And um, other members of the state already already fill out a Form Six. The counter narrative, of course, is this is going to have a tremendous chilling effect on people going into service and local government. Um, you're already subjected to an extensive level of scrutiny, um, criticism, cheering. Um, this will not help. Uh, and uh, other, you know, there's already been, I I've talked to some or heard tell, I should say, of some public officials who've said, if this passes, I'm out. This isn't what I signed up for. Um, I I that doesn't surprise me. I will tell you with the current Form Ones, I've had people get elected to like a planning and zoning board, figure out three or four weeks later that they have to fill out a Form One, which again is not that granular and say, that's not what I, I just thought I was passing on variances. I want to know part of this and walk away. A Form Six for our for our city commissions, councils, um, aldermen, whatever you wish to call them, is is going to present yet another challenge in the landscape of local government. I mentioned at our last meeting that I had gone to the Big C, um, spoke on different issues. And I was quoted as saying that this legislative session has the potential to be calamitous for local governments. I stand by that statement. I think this is an example of, is is one example of that. I'm happy to speak to other things, Mayor, but that would be the the cliff nose version. I'm trying, while we're while we're here, I'm looking to see right now where they stand. Yeah, it's on first reading in the House. And um, it's been added to the second reading calendar as of April twelfth. The related bill, the Senate Bill seven seventy four, Senate Bill seven seventy four, um, passed this, I believe it passed the full Senate on April twelfth by a vote of thirty five in favor and five opposed and is in messages to the House. Basically, they're just waiting for the House vote and the governor's signature. And and as I've said in the past, your your challenge this particular session is you've got one party with a super majority, your governor's in the same party. If leadership decides something's moving, something's moving. This is moving.
And uh, whenever it was discussed uh, on the Senate floor, they had a slight debate. And then uh, Senator Hooper, he uh, did an amendment to make it to where the Ethics Commission had to also do the the same thing. They had, they would have to switch to doing the the same form as we would. Uh, and uh, but that was it. That there was a talk about
Company Amendment, but it doesn't change anything for you. I said it's a misery loves company amendment, but it doesn't change.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Um, uh
Is that going to be going into effect in twenty twenty four?
I'm going to read you the letter that the Mayor's Council of Pinellas County drafted and uh, and all the mayors, all the uh, members uh, uh, are on the letter, but I'm just going to read it to you to put it into perspective as to where we really are and where it's uh, moving forward. So just bear with me here. Uh, this is dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty three. It was uh, it was mailed uh, to, let me find it here. Let's see if this has got the now, it's it's in the the actual open email that shows who it was mailed to. So I'll say, I'll tell you that in a minute. Dear Representative, on behalf of the Mayor's Council of Pinellas County, we write today to discuss HB thirty seven relating to financial disclosures for local officers. As drafted, the bill would require all elected members of municipal governing bodies to annually file full disclosure of financial interest, Form Six, rather than the limited financial disclosure, Form One. They are required to file under current law. The bill imposes these requirements with no consideration of annual budget, size, or spending authority. As you may know, SB seven seven four has passed the Senate Wednesday, April twelfth. We are very concerned about this legislation. Local elected officials and their families live and work right next door to their city's residents and are especially sensitive to people who are their friends and neighbors having access to every intimate detail of their finances. This extended disclosure may cause otherwise excellent new candidates to decide not to seek office, knowing that all the details of the finances are public record. City elected officials are already fully accountable through Form One, which does not require or which does require details on the source of all assets. In addition, these officials are fully transparent during each stage of the legislative process by virtue of being subject to the Florida Sunshine Law, precluding private conversations between members and mandating open meetings. Finally, local officials did not run for office with expectations of being required to submit this expansive financial information. At the very least, municipal officials uh, should be able to finish their current term without the legislation changing uh, the rules midterm. Then, after careful consideration, municipal candidates can decide if they want to continue serving in municipal office with the new Form Six requirements. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to the legislation. Uh, please contact me or any member of the uh, Mayor's Council of Pinellas County. Uh, this was sent to our five area representatives and uh, we're waiting for an answer, but I think it's going to fall on deaf ear.
But it sounds like you've already accepted that it's going to get passed. Well, I think you more or less it's going to get passed.
An attorney is forever a cynic, but yes, um, I I think it, at this stage, all indications are it. There's no reason to believe it's dying on the floor of the House. Or that the governor is going to veto this yet. I mean, the 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 democratic process is what it is. And if the elected officials of the the, at the local level of the state, um, continue to make it known at the very least to their to their Senate and certainly to their governor, that this is not what they want, maybe they're responsive to that. Um, the stance of the current um, legislative session is not one that is particularly concerned with the concerns of local government officials.
So I I'm not a uh, going to call out anyone and make them reveal what their what their decision would be if this bill passes, but um, I suspect that there will be many people throughout the state that will resign because of this. I also uh, further expect that uh, once their their term is up, that they won't run again because of this. And I also believe firmly believe that fewer people will actually run for uh, for election uh, that have never ran before because of this. And and I think that's, that's really the goal is to again, put the squeeze on us to where it's harder and harder to fill these seats. Uh, so going back to a prior conversation we had about our term limits and uh, the way that our terms run and possibly uh, we may even uh, should consider looking into uh, we're, we're one of the smallest communities up and down the beach and we have more council members than anyone else does. Uh, everyone else is five. I I, I understand that uh, there was a reason why uh, it was done the way that we did it, but the the uh, the number of council members that we have isn't even divided up into certain territories or areas or anything like that. It's just we have seven council members. And my fear is, is that if this passes, we may struggle to even fill those seven seats. Uh, and and God only knows what's going to happen with our boards, uh, because if they're subject to the same regulations, uh, who's going to want to do that? Uh, and and there's no, I mean, uh, Vice Mayor Shirley, you run a business. It's going to cost you money to to gather this data and submit it every year.
And I will do it at the, for other reasons.
Right.
You know, everything's owned in LLC. I don't but I don't need that, but I don't need that information on the street. And the problem is, is at this point, we don't even have time to like change our former government to really think about how do you tackle this problem? I mean, if it passes, we have from now to the end of the year.
That's right.
To reorganize the city.
To reorganize. And I mean, this goes into a full charter change.
Yeah.
Not only that, but if they have their way and they're working on it right now to where we would have to do impact studies to change our ordinances, I I mean, whatever we're going to do, we're going to have to move on it quickly if we plan to make any changes to the way that we um, govern Beller Beach, uh, because there, I I think that there is going to have a crippling effect on us. Whenever you have a community of, what is it, eighteen hundred people? You know, it it doesn't look, doesn't look good for us.
So what do you think the goal is to get us into the county and just eliminate our city completely?
I think that um
So the county makes more money? I mean, I'm sitting here going, I'm trying, I mean, county already taxed that. The city gets no tax dollars compared to what the county is getting from us.
I don't know what the goal is because I can't speak to the motives of people. And as I've advised you in the past, I've tried to advise to get strongly against people's motives. What I will tell you is what is the potential collateral effect of this? Absolutely. If you take a small community and you say we're going to preempt your zoning as you've known it unless you had it in place before twenty eleven, the short term rental licenses. We're fully proved, they have fully preempted the field on um, home based business regulation. You don't have the ability to regulate home based businesses. That was preempted in a prior session. They amend um, statutes like the Bur Harris Act, making it easier to file claims based on a diminution in your property value. Um, so if you claim, oh, well, now the government's regulated this, but now I should get paid for this. And in the current session, what you have is Senate Bill one seventy and House Bill, it's corollary House Bill fifteen fifteen, which not only has requires us to potentially have a, an economic impact statement every time we adopt an ordinance, but also includes language that if we adopt an ordinance and it is challenged as being preempted or frivolous, um, that we have to stop enforcing our ordinance during the penancy of those proceedings. And if we lose, we have to pay attorney's fees. So when you talk about like the fire ordinance, for example, and I'm just using it as an example, they have not threatened anything of the sort. It's been collaborative dialogue. But if a party says, oh, you have this ordinance, I'm challenging it, it's been preempted or it is unlawful. Um, we can't enforce it. If we lose, we pay attorney's fees. And then if we go to amend it at any time after October first, if this, um, by the way, Senate Bill one seventy I'm talking about has passed the Senate and is waiting on the House. Um, if that passes, then we're going to also have to do an economic impact statement based on our two staff members who have what competencies uh, to do this on on every version of an ordinance. Um, the net effect is you see, you've already, you folks have seen it and I've heard it in other communities. We don't have neighborhoods, we have streets. Um, our neighbors are just, our neighborhoods are just hoods because there's no neighbors anymore. All, you know, all those sorts of speech you're left with in a small community like this, a small group of people trying to keep a city together. And what used to be your public resources are now amenities to a tourist district. Um, and I don't mean tourism, I mean, like a special district like what you've heard Reedy Creek is and the like. The most dystopian version of this, since you ask, is you have the last few hundred residents fighting for what their city is. And legislature saying, there's no point to you existing up and down these beaches, having twelve cities. We can make you the West Central tourist district.
So
That's the most dystopian view of that.
If uh, uh, these very, because we are kind of divided up in the areas and and just, you know, demographic, uh, uh, not demographic, but geographic locations. So you've got, you've got a southern location, you've got an island over here. You've got the north area over here. You've got the condos. Uh, the condos already have a homeowners association or condo association. Are they under the same, are are the
There's a whole legal regime for condo associations and homeowners associations. Whether they're facing the same level of attack, less so um, than cities, because your government and all government is bad government, all all government is big government, big government is bad, right? That's the axiom here. Um, if DC tells Tallahassee what to do, Tallahassee's never happy. Tallahassee's happy to tell you what to do. Um, but um, if all got, a condo association is not big government. Um, so those are private property owners agreeing to subordinate their proper private property rights. Uh, there's a little bit more flexibility, but there have been some more recent legislative changes to limit what they do like around short term rentals and the like and say, well, if you had this shore, if you're going to make it new, then you need this, you know, super majority or whatever to approve those kinds of changes. So we are seeing this general change towards, we just want to be the economic engine without necessarily looking, Euclidean zoning, the zoning as we've historically known it is at best eroding, at worst long since gone, and we just haven't realized that cultural moment yet.
So what about the, yeah, what about the association? Okay, so twenty second. What the, that whole neighborhood has an association that's been all but abandoned, but it's out there. Could they respool that association and have and protect their rights for a while?
I I can't speak to that only because honestly, I don't, I I don't deal in homeowners association, condo association law. It is its own chapter in the Florida statutes, and I'm also not going to give private property owners legal advice um, without pay. Uh, but the the, you know, what people, or what people, what people can do and what people are willing to do is also different because the reality is anytime you form a homeowners association or anything like, what you're willing, what you are saying is if my property rights are to use the legal analogy, a bundle of sticks, I'm willing to give away some of the sticks in that bundle. Most people are not willing when they realize that's going to be an encumbrance on my ability to sell. That's going to be an encumbrance on across the street, they can do that, but because I joined this association, we can't. And now my house isn't as valuable. And it's only as valuable as how many people are willing to join it, um, which is another challenge. As you see with beach easements and other issues, it's hundred percent compliance is a challenge. And I'm not opining on the wisdom of that, just the reality.
You know, the one thing I will say about that is that I would uh, I would stand behind uh, the fact that the majority of our original code was based upon HOA.
Right.
And and what they did was they said, all right, we're forming Beller Beach now and and they kind of just took the original HOA code and kind of massaged it and turned it into something that uh, that's why we have no parking in the street. That's why we have, there's, there's many things that what's that?
Ninety day rentals.
Uh, I don't know about the ninety day rental uh, part of it, but uh
There were things when we did the first review of the code that included like made quarters and how those could be occupied and just some real unique things that were timestamps sort of, you know, that were taken out of the code. So
Uh, it's, it's sad because everyone here volunteers their time. I mean, all these other boards we have, they come here, they volunteer their time. This it goes back to that old saying, no good deed goes unpunished. I mean, um, I mean, I I did this because I love this city. I I mean, I'm privileged to live here. I thank God. I mean, I, I did this because I love this city. I, I mean, I'm privileged to live here. I thank God I live here. But, I mean, I'm retired so much, so it's not gonna affect me too much, but like I said, like when she says, I'm not gonna do this, I'm not gonna reveal this, I might, and you might not reveal it. I mean, you guys are a lot younger.
It doesn't sound like we have a choice.
Saying is, you know,
It sounds like, you know, also, you know, the, our citizens advisory committee, I can guarantee you the people that sit on that will not.
And that'll, that will affect everybody, right?
I, I'm looking at the, I'm, I'm trying to get to the language right now. My recollection of the language is it's the commission and not the subordinate boards. Um, but I'm, I'm not square on that.
That's, that's what uh, the, the representative from the Florida League said. He was looking it up as we were, we were talking about it and he said that the uh, uh, the, the volunteer boards would, would not, it, it was strictly elected.
Because at one point, the draft included city managers and that fell out of the draft um, on, on the way.
Yeah.
Um, so the boards are not, you're saying?
I think the boards are not, but.
They're still form one, not form six.
Great to have our parks director have to fill out and.
But I, I think that Patty and, uh, now, do you, do you do a form now at all? Patty, you do a one, I think that you would have to go to the form six also. I think that uh, city staff is uh, required to do it also.
Who really pushed, so how long does that take? How much work? Like when I was campaigning and I think I hired this wonderful young lady who was, I was working with and she was giving me forms to fill out and all that kind of neat stuff. Was that a form one somewhere along the way?
No, your campaign stuff's totally separate from this. Your campaign.
I filled one out.
Oh yeah, there are campaign financial disclosure.
The form one, the form one.
Okay, yes, you filled out a form one. We're talking about changing that.
You, you've had to have done one because you've been on the council.
Right.
You usually send it sometime in the month of June.
Yeah, but typically.
Ordinary deadline is by like the.
We would do that by ourselves.
Yeah.
The form six, we would also do by ourselves, but it would take more time. Or would I have to hire somebody to do that?
Depends on how many.
I live a very simple life.
Oh, nah, man. So there, there's another thing to think about, which is, all right, uh, obviously everyone's going to be inconvenienced for doing this. Um, it may be necessary to actually do a very minor pay uh, to offset the extra cost and uh, and.
A hundred thousand?
Royal, no, I don't even think so. Maybe a, a ten dollars or something, but uh, something, something ceremonial. Just to show that, hey, we're uh, and I, I'm not saying do this for me, but what I'm saying is maybe on the next term, we look into making that part of the uh, compensation for being on the council.
I've suggested that before and, you know, and I said not, not, I'm not speaking for myself. I'm just speaking for future and I got shot down. So I, I would be in support of that.
We're in a different place now.
Yeah.
I, I would as well, and I would even donate whatever the number is. I don't even want it. So it would be like Donald Trump and I would say.
Well, it was gonna be a hundred grand.
I mean, I agree. I think that would help future, you know, some people might. Well, the other beach towns, do they have, I mean, the other beach towns that.
Do they pay?
Do they?
They, most of them do get paid.
Every council member I've met has, it's some pay. We're the only city that I've met so far that doesn't.
When I, when I got on council, I called and they were saying, well, what's your income? I said, none. They said, what?
Yeah.
It kept, what?
You go to the league of city meetings, they laugh at you.
They laugh at you.
Are you serious?
Okay. Well, whenever we say we're not here to make money, we're not here to make money.
Yeah, we gotta do that full disclosure to make sure you're not making money.
Okay. I got a general business where you're not.
Okay, so um, I, it, we've definitely had some things that we need to look at and uh, obviously if uh, if we decide to move forward, I, maybe we, we keep talking about this a little bit every time we have a work session. Uh, just for updates and also to uh, kind of figure out what direction uh, this council would like to, to, to go. Uh, because it may be time for some changes for uh, uh, Beller Beach.
Do you wanna just add, so maybe some of the new council members don't understand what a charter review and entails and that it has to go to vote in front of the citizens and there's,
Yeah.
It's not something we can just review and change.
Well, there's some things we can change. We're, we have the freedom to actually uh, change the uh, the pay. I believe we can do that without a charter change. Uh, but as far as the number of council members, uh, the length of terms, uh, when the elections occur, all of that would, has to go up uh, to a, a general election and uh, be approved by the citizens.
Hey, we have to go into the next uh, cycle.
Uh, the pay, you, uh, I think we actually have the freedom to do it anytime we want to and make it active immediately, uh, as far as the pay goes.
Um, I believe my recollection on the statute is the pay would have to apply at the beginning of the next cycle, uh, under chapter one twelve, that ethic statute, you can vote on it, but it can't be effective immediately. It can be effective beginning a specified time. As to your charter amendments, any charter amendment, including the ones you folks have been discussing, um, there are limitations. A charter amendment is approved by your electorate. Charter amendment requires ballot language that can be no more than, I think it's seventy-four words or seventy-five words, which finessing that is always a joy. Um, I have to look at your, we, we haven't had a discussion about any charter amendments beyond maybe a review commission. Um, absent language in your charter, you folks are free to suggest a charter. You don't need a charter review commission to propose a charter amendment. You can top down, just say, we want a charter amendment on the next thing that looks like this, if you decide it's important enough for your community under statute. Again, I haven't looked at what your code says, if there's any special requirements on you. And by way of example, in most communities, your charter officer works at your pleasure. You can terminate me at any time. In your code, there's a very special process that forthright if you're terminating the manager. Um, so I need to make sure that when we're talking about, and that's just by way of how charters work differently. We all love you, Pop. Um, but that's in a way of, by way of example on, on how things can be different charters in charge.
Yeah, and it, because it's not been that long since we did change the charter, it would, it, we would have to work very hard to convince the community that uh, of why, why this was happening. Ri- right now, there's no witnesses and no one's, unless there's someone watching at home, no one uh, knows anything about what we're talking about. And uh, it's gonna be, we're, we're gonna have to work very hard, all of us, if we decide to do something like this, but I, I really, I think it's gonna have to happen just because, just because of what uh, our buddies up in Tallahassee are doing to us.
Well, and, and you know, to the extent some of you are frustrated by this, my only advice to you, because I've had elected officials say, what can we do about this? What can we do about that? Is the democratic process of these, if, if your buddies are no longer your buddies, then make that known in ballot boxes. And I'm not advocating any one result. I'm saying make your own individual decisions as you go through life. It's hard because the discussions that we're having here very much affect you. They very much affect your residents, but that's not what's gonna be covered on Instagram. It's not what's gonna be covered on Fox News. It's not what can be covered on CNN. I don't care your source of news. There's enough controversy in this world and in this state, especially in this session, you know, concealed carry, um, you know, heartbeat bills or life, um, you know, abortion bills, whatever you wanna call them, those are gonna get attention. Financial form disclosures are very, very hard to get people to care about and it, it doesn't affect them. It just affects like seven people in their whole city. Um, in theory, uh, and so understand that there is a lot going on this session and it's, it is hard. And I sympathize with your concerns and saying, how do we reach them about Senate Bill seven four, seven fourteen on short-term rentals and house and, and one seventy on attorney's fees and, and impact statements. That stuff's not gonna make, it's not gonna sell papers or get clicks. Um, and it, it is hard uh, from a messaging standpoint. That doesn't make the charge any less important, but I sympathize with your frustrations.
I think a lot of citizens like to see it, you know, let's disclose the guides.
Yeah, well, right, because the narrative is just like, what's wrong with transparency? What are you trying to hide, Frank?
Yeah. No, exactly. No, I agree with you a hundred percent. And I, I, I don't think it's gonna get traction to go the other way.
And whenever I, I contacted DeSegley about that, he said it's about transparency. Uh, and I, you know, I would like to see a big movement uh, of the sunshine law.
For the, yeah.
If, if you're talking about transparency, well, let's be transparent. And you do the same thing that we have to do, which is you can't meet on the golf course and talk business, you know, you have to do it in public meetings, just like the rest of us.
And they have us so concerned that we don't socialize. We don't, you know, like, it's like, you just don't wanna be accused of anything. So it's, it's, it's really a bad.
Yeah. Okay, okay, so uh, I, we'll, we'll discuss this more. I'm gonna uh, I'm gonna jot all this down and uh, and then I'll send it to Kyle and he can massage it a little bit and send it out to everyone to, to have something to think about. Uh, you okay with that? Okay, uh, Mike's able.
Yeah, I do have one item. Um, this is kind of a personal thing. You've noticed my last name starts with a Z. And what comes with that over sixty-three years, you get a little testy because you're always put last. For example, up here, the next is the powers and the mayor, but you start out there and there, the farthest away from the power. There's a reason why we took Jody Shirley, moved her from her seat to the seat next to the mayor. Now I understand that, but I don't understand, and frankly, I'm kind of really disrespected. Right out there, we have the line of councilmen and behind the door is my picture. I'm not happy about that. Take a look. You open that door, who? I fought a hard-fought election. You were number one, I think you're number two, Paul. I mean, I was number three. I mean, accused of everything, yet I'm put behind the door. Firstly, I'm just asking of this as you. Can we do the following? Just take those same pictures and just move them to the center area over here? So nobody's behind the door like I am?
Never even noticed that, that's interesting.
Very proud of my name. No, no, no. So this one, frankly, I like that because I got the extra chair in my crap, but can we just out there, just move that over to the center area?
I, I'm not gonna ask the council to decide on where uh, the pictures need to go, but I will ask the city manager to figure it out and, and solve this problem.
Okay, and if it's easy just to shift mine through that, that's.
No, no, no.
I look out, you're the only person I see, so I find it's perfect location. Right through that.
Any other, uh, anything else anyone would like to add in general business?
No, Mike killed my uh, general business under number six.
We did?
I was gonna bring all that up.
No, okay, I got it.
No.
Kyle had mentioned last time, uh, I think, um, Tom Washburn, he's gonna come on, come over here. Are we still working on that?
Yes, I was gonna ask you after the meeting, it's on Wednesday.
It's on Wednesday.
Wednesday, hopefully make it.
Wednesday?
Yes, I sent you the invite.
But Wednesday of this week?
Yes.
Like what time?
Um, time is.
Uh, I will add also, I uh, just received a text from someone that is watching, so. Someone.
Thank you.
One o'clock.
We can't see who it is, but somebody's out here, so uh, anyway, um, I guess that's it for tonight, uh, eight thirty. I appreciate everyone uh, hanging in there and uh, and uh, being open to a lively discussion.
I'm depressed now.
If anybody should find themselves feeling optimistic, feel free to call me.
Exactly. You'll wreck that for us. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Goodnight, everyone.